Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District School Board meeting? Today is Wednesday, October 12.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Michelle, could you do a roll call, please?
Here.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have a teacher and contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We are recessed.
Do I have a motion to reopen the Wednesday, October 12, 2022, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call? And just a quick moment before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. At the end of the pledge, we're just going to take a brief moment in recognition of a few community members that we've lost. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
May I pause for a minute? I see the flag is pushing.
Is hiding. The flag is hiding.
We will not have our flag hiding. Looks like somebody closed it. I see what happened with the flag. It may be hiding because it was hiding for a reason there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. We have one set of minutes to approve from the September 21, 2022, regular business meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Sorry.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, if we have any public participation, please approach the podium, state your first and last name to address the board.
Good evening. My name is Jerome Valenti, and I'm a trustee of the Harrison Educational Foundation. It is my pleasure to present these checks to the Harrison Central School District on behalf of HEF. The foundation has approved two grant applications. The first was granted in 2019, but went unused due to COVID and was returned. The grant is being reissued to the Harrison High School Guidance Department to assist those families facing economic challenges to have their sons and daughters attend college tours. The total grant would allow each student to attend two to three college tours with a minimum of one in the fall and one in the spring. Tonight, HEF presents you with the first half of this grant, $2,500, to immediately assist the Guidance Department with the fall tours. The remaining $2,500 of the $5,000 grant request to be used towards the cost of the spring college tours will be issued in November, December, 2022. The second grant approved is for the Harrison High School Technology Department for IB design and all other technology-based educational purposes. This grant is for the purchase of one HP Design Jet T-730 large-format plotter printer, which will allow those in design and drawing classes to print documents 36 inches wide, much more easily read than the current 11 by 17, and much more in line with what they will see and utilize in this field professionally. It also includes matte and glossy paper rolls, all ink, and replacement print heads necessary for immediate use, as well as an extended warranty. We are pleased to present you tonight with this check in the amount of $6,000 to fund this grant as well. Thank you for recognizing me tonight, as it's HEF's pleasure to present you with these two checks for $8,500 total to fund these two wonderful programs. And HEF is proud to continue our support for our schools, and we thank you, Dr. Wool, the Board of Education, and everyone in the Harrison Central School District who make it possible for our students to experience such excellence in education. Finally, tomorrow night, Thursday, October 13, is HEF's annual fundraiser at the Harrison Meadows Country Club, our first in-person fundraiser since 2019. To register to attend, donate to HEF, or to check out our list of silent auction items, please visit our website at harrisoned.org. Any and all support is thoroughly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Those are two great grants, too. Really excited about those.
Yes. Thank you to the entire Harrison Education Foundation for all of your hard work and dedication to our school district.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
We're going to ask for a photo op for our foundation, our webpage with our board president and a number of HEF Dr. Laidwig is going to accommodate me with a picture. Those of you watching at home, though, we are so fortunate that we not only have a thriving foundation, we have wonderful people that volunteer their time to do this incredible work. So, good stuff. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks for all you do. And I hope to see everybody tomorrow night at that foundation fundraiser. That's how we help all of our kids get important opportunities. Those two grants are just so terrific. I love the idea that we're giving kids who typically would not have the opportunity to visit colleges, a chance to visit colleges. It's just so great. And I know Dr. O'Keefe is dancing somewhere tonight that she has a printer for her design and technology course. So, Madam President, back to you.
So, moving on to the president's update, there is a lot of exciting things happening with just a month and change of school. First, we had a very successful EEC carnival despite the weather. I think we had a tremendous outpouring from the community, and obviously all of the money is donated to the four elementary schools coming together to serve for the EEC. We also had the Great to Live in Harrison Parade, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples. We had a very well-attended parade, which is always exciting to celebrate Harrison and all of the exciting things going on in our community. Also, to note on the calendar, we have Newsies Performance. It's the play here at LMK that is going to be on November 18th and 19th. And from what I understand, we have more students attending this play and joining in the performance, I think close to 100 students.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, very exciting. We also just recently had the tenure celebration, which is one of the most special nights, I would say, of the year to honor teachers that have shown their dedication and commitment and extremely hard work that they put through in compassion and commitment to their students. So, congratulations to all that have received tenure this year. Also just mentioned, we have the Harrison Education Foundation. I just have to mention again, that's tomorrow at the, I almost called it Willeridge, Harrison Meadows.
Harrison Meadows, right.
And I will be there and hope we will have a large attendance for that. It's always a wonderful night to give back and donate to the community and for our enrichment of our students. We had a very exciting, lots of athletics. But actually, before that, I'm going to just quickly touch on the debate team. Captain Jesse Pine placed second at Green Hill Schools National Championship Tournament. Jesse was one of 118 Lincoln-Douglas debaters competing from around the country and ended with a record of 10 wins and one loss. This is the fourth time a Harrison debater has reached the final round of Green Hill. On October 10, the marching band visited the University of Pennsylvania, and they participated in Band Day hosted by University of Pennsylvania's Athletic Department and the Penn Band. So, our students joined the university band, which was performed at halftime. So, the students were really excited and enthusiastic to be part of that very special occasion. We had, just moving on to the varsity girls tennis, Gabriella Smith, Sophia Bordina, Lauren Ross, Savannah Surphilippi, excuse me if I'm mispronouncing anything, Barbara Jo Coppola, Inex Sayet, and Hannah Rose Alexa Landsberg competed in the individual Section One Tennis Sectionals this weekend. The tennis team championships start this upcoming Friday, and the Huskies are seeded at number one. Excellent job.
Mm-hmm.
Going to leave football for last. Girls soccer, the girls' team battled Rye to a zero-to-zero tie in a thrilling double-time standoff. Congratulations to Eva Sefaloni for one goal, Lucy Alcoba two assists, Parker Yates one assist, Kaya Ito eight saves as goalie. Volleyball, the Huskies won both games this past weekend. Friday, the Huskies won 3-0 over Nannewett, and on Saturday, won 3-0 nothing over White Plains. The Harrison girls' swimming wins over Yorktown and Byram Hills in last night's try meet. These girls are 6-0. Excellent job to the swim team. Boys soccer, 2-0 nothing over Pelham to improve their record 6-4 for the season. And we have a few players nominated for the Low-Hud Players of the Week: Abby Chudoff for field hockey, Kyra Reepa volleyball, and Nico Marinelli for football, all nominees for the Low-Hud Players of the Week. So, congratulations for their outstanding performances. Boys and girls cross-country, Katrina Terrelli and Colin Dempsey each finished in the lead for their respective teams, and the girls' cross-country team took third place finish in the Sufferin Invitational. And for a major highlight of our school district, the Harrison Rye football team, was this the first time since 2012?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Ten years. The ten-year run.
And it was the most incredible victory. The energy in the stadium from the first play, the touchdown within minutes, and to be honest, we dominated. It was a very exciting game. Lindy was there as well. I gave her a hello from the stand. Dr. Wool, of course, on the sidelines pacing back and forth, just like beyond excited, number-one cheerleader right here.
It was a lot of fun.
But they won 22-7 for a well-overdue defeat. And congratulations to Coach Soraco and the entire team. Well-deserved, hard work truly pays off. I am very excited for this team. And actually, a huge congratulations to Coach Jay Soraco on earning the New York Giants Coach of the Week. So, wonderful accomplishment. And I think that was everything that I have. I'm going to pass the baton over to you.
Thank you. We have a somewhat busy night tonight, but all, I think, important things to just pause and think about. I want to start with our moment of silence. I sent a note to the board, which I also shared with all the members of my leadership team, about what an interesting weekend this was in so many ways. We have so much to be proud of as a school district, as a school community. The Rye-Harrison game is one of the oldest, most storied football rivalries in the state of New York. And Coach Soraco is getting a lot of accolades because he won the game. The accolades that I want to heap upon him is because he is an extraordinary teacher. He has done so much, not just to put the football team in a position to win, but to groom intelligent, thoughtful young men who understand how to step into a big moment and apply their best selves. It was an interesting time to be superintendent because we had all of this joy, all of this celebration, and those incredibly generous, kind young athletes dedicated the game to somebody we affectionately called Big Al, but Mr. Al Mazulo, who was a devoted fan not only to the football program, but to Harrison athletics in general. But the thing that I remember about Mr. Mazulo is when I came here as an outsider in 1999, the new kid on the block, an assistant superintendent, not everybody welcomed strangers. And what I remembered so much about this heart of the Husky was he was one of the first persons to hold out his hand, to greet me, to make me feel welcome. There's something about people like Big Al that are worthy of noting and celebrating. We often remind people in our learning community that your title is far less significant than your character. And so, we certainly mourn his loss, but we were graced by his presence. I also want to speak about another person without title, but Mr. Courtright was brought to tears when he was remembering Guadalupe Juaneros, who was a lunch aide for many years at the Preston School. And she passed recently. Those moments of silence were in their memory. So, there's another person without a big title. Mr. Courtright told me she was one of the most important people in his school because he could walk into the cafeteria and she would say to him, Dennis, that boy is having a bad day, or he didn't have lunch. You might want to see how he's doing. So, I'm reminded all the time that what makes this district so extraordinary is all of the people, not some of us, not those of us that are considered to be in charge, that whether you're a custodian, a secretary, a coach, an aide, you make a difference. And the way in which our community mourns these two people is indicative of what makes me proudest about us. This is what we value. We value good people who do good things. And so, it was an interesting week where we went from this extraordinary celebration to this sense of sadness, but also reflection and joy. And tragically, in the midst of the Rye-Harrison game, not somebody who was a member of our immediate learning community, but a local contractor, was sadly killed on the property of the Parsons School while his company was trimming trees. And so, we extend our condolences and best wishes to his family. And now, I also want to just talk a little bit about tenure. What is tenure in Harrison? It's our way of saying, we trust you with the lives of our children for the next 30 years. Because most teachers who get tenure in this district never leave. There's only a handful that leave because it's a remarkable place to work and to engage in what is maybe the most important job you can ever have, which is caring for children and helping them grow. So, we recognize lots of teachers, and there were lots of stories to be told that night, and there were so many that we are proud of. But it's a night where we get to just remind families, because many of our teachers sacrifice incredible hours to do the work that they do. And I also recognize three administrators that night who were an integral part of our team. So, this is a community that recognizes and celebrates the contributions we all make to this extraordinary work. So, I'm filled with pride. I'm certainly sad to have lost good people, but I'm also grateful for having experienced their touch and magic on the hearts and minds of children. I'm going to shift now to a more unsavory topic, and then we're going to have a very important update from our auditor on the financial condition of our district. Folks, I can only say this to you until you finally hear me. Social media is not news. So, today, there was a rumor that something terrible was going to happen in our school, this middle school, tomorrow. It was not based in any facts that we could determine. We investigated it as early as we could, and the Harrison Police Department, as they always do, our extraordinary partners. But if we believe that there is a risk to your children, ever, you will hear from the principal of your school, or you will hear from me, or you will hear from Dr. Laidwig. Somebody will let you know. So, never, ever, ever worry that we're not paying attention. If you hear something, let us know. But because a student says something or posts it on their page, doesn't make it fact. So, there were a lot of people today that were frightened unnecessarily. Check in with us before you do a disservice and possibly put people at risk by having us chase things that are not, in fact, real. As I said a few minutes ago, it's all about how each of us contributes to the well-being of kids. So, you can help by checking before you share information. Just check. Don't create panic because panic creates the opportunity for something terrible. So, we're always in this together. And now, I'd like to shift from all of that interesting stuff to something that actually is very interesting. Scott, if you wouldn't mind joining us, I'm pleased to welcome, as we do every year, Mr. Oling to the podium. And Tim, do you want to introduce this, or you or Joe? No? Okay. I just want to recognize Assistant Superintendent Tim Whipple and our Treasurer Joe Cesari here, who were a large part of this report. And before I go forward, would members of the Audit Committee like to set the stage?
Um, the Audit Committee, Dennis, Nina, and Joe, and Timmy, who had two meetings last week. One to review the report from our internal auditor, Don Hoffman of Cullen Danowski, to report on the detailed testing that he had done this year directed to information technology issues. We also discussed several areas to consider for detailed testing for the next fiscal year. And in a separate meeting, we met with Scott to go over the results of the external audit of the district's financial statements, which I think he's now going to summarize for us.
Thank you all. Good evening. As was just said, you know, we went over this audit report for the district in detail with the Audit Committee. So, tonight is more of just an overview for those in the community who might be listening in. This is the audit for the school's fiscal year that ended June 30 of '22. And right after the table of contents in this report is our auditor's opinion on these financials. It's really the only part of the report that belongs to us, even though we helped prepare it for the district, the whole report. And the good news for the district is that our audited opinion is known as a clean or unmodified opinion. It is the highest level of assurance that any auditor can provide their client. It basically says in a lot of words, but basically says that we believe that these numbers that are presented here fairly present what happened in the district from a financial standpoint for the year June 30, '22. So, I'm just going to take you through very high-level, the information that's on page 57 of the audit report. It's the general fund income statement of, you know, revenues and expenditures. The general fund, of course, is the fund that most of the district's activity runs through during the year. It's the approval that the voters gave back in the spring of '21 for your operations for the '21-'22 fiscal year. And page 58 gives you a comparison, you know, side-by-side comparison of the same information from the previous fiscal year, so you can see some of the differences. So, the top third of the page are the revenues that support your operations here. And you can see that total revenues in both the original and as the budget, you know, went through the year, if there were any changes to the budget, those would be reflected in the second column. There were no changes in the revenue numbers. So, the budget estimated revenues of approximately $123.1 million to fund your operations here. Like most districts in Westchester, the majority of that comes from the levy of property taxes. So, you can see on the first line, the estimate was about $110 million for the direct levy of property taxes to residents and businesses within the school district's boundaries. And other main revenues in there include what's known as other tax items, which is the STAR money that comes directly from New York State to the district. That's helped offset some folks' property tax bills. And then, of course, your regular state aid apportionment from New York State estimated at about $5.2 million, your foundation aid, and your textbook aid, building aid, transportation aid, and so forth. So, the good news for the district in the third column on a revenue standpoint is your revenues came in at $123.3 million compared to the estimate of $123.1, so essentially right on budget. You did about $234,000 better than your plan. Sometimes, there's a shortfall in property taxes if there are tax sorcery payments or SCAR tax refunds relating to the '21-'22 year. That's why the property tax revenue is short. Otherwise, you're made whole by the town. They're required to make you whole. On non-property taxes, which is the sales tax distribution primarily from Westchester County, of course, you know, sales tax was doing very well last year, and so the county shares a portion of that with all the school districts in Westchester. But overall, about $200,000 better on revenues. The middle of the page is what you are spending those resources on. The first group of expenditures, general support, are generally the administrative-type functions of the district or the buildings and grounds type costs. And overall, this year, you spent about $12.6 million in the middle column. It's actually down from last year in this category of spending. It was down about $800,000. The majority of that had to do with the extra COVID-related spending that was in the previous year that obviously did not recur to the same level in last fiscal year. The middle group of expenditures, instructional expenditures, so these are really, you know, you can call them the classroom costs, you know, the real program costs of operating the district, teacher salaries, guidance counselors, extracurricular, all those things that are part of the program. And this year, you could see in the third column, you spent about $69.3 million. It was up about $2.2 million from the previous year. Again, a lot of this, some of it has to do with contractual labor increases in your labor contracts, step increases for teachers. But some of it is also just returning to more normal levels in '21-'22 compared to 2021. We know a lot of things were shut down in the previous year, like extracurriculars and various other things. And so, those things kind of returned to more normal levels, maybe not 100% of pre-COVID levels, but, you know, closer than what had been there. Transportation costs this year were $6.8 million. Those were higher than the previous year, again, you know, related to more fully, you know, operational extracurricular activities and so forth. Employee benefits came in at about $30 million, or about $600,000 more than the previous year. Certain benefit costs go up, health insurance costs, payments to the teachers' retirement system, those kinds of things. But overall, about $600,000 there. This year, there was a change made in discussions with your business office folks here, deciding to record your debt service obligations, your principal and interest on all your borrowed monies, primarily for capital construction. These used to be accounted for in a separate debt service fund. They're now being accounted for directly here in the general fund. So, you see the principal and interest where you saw none last year. But what that meant is a few lines down in the other financing sources section, it used to be transferred out. Money used to be transferred out to the debt service fund to pay the principal and interest. So, now, that line is much lower than last year. So, you know, it's basically a wash. So, the good news for the district at the very bottom is, if you look at the first two columns, you actually expected to deplete fund balance by about $4.6 million. If everything came in exactly as you had budgeted, fund balance would have declined. If everything came in exactly as you had budgeted, fund balance would have declined by $4.6 million, and you would have utilized your fund balance, your savings account, to fund that. The good news for the districts, when you look at the third number up in the third column, not only did you not deplete fund balance, but you actually added $1.4 million to it. Now, caveat with the $1.4 million is about $1 million of that was in this debt service fund that I just mentioned. When the decision was to collapse that into the general fund this year, there was fund balance in that fund. We brought it into this fund, and you'll see when we go through the fund balance, it's just restricted again for debt service. It has to keep the same character. So really, the surplus for the year was about $400,000 when you back that out, but still, you know, a positive result, given that you anticipated drawing down fund balance. So with the $1.4 that was added to your opening fund balance of $32.8 million, you ended the year with just over $34 million in your fund balance, or you can call it your savings account. If you go back to page 56, the $34 million is the second number up from the bottom, and fund balance is the difference between your assets and liabilities that the district has in this fund. You see the top half of the page. You had assets of $46 million at June 30. Most of that in the form of cash, $43 million. So all your cash is kept in local banks. All the money is FDIC insured, and obviously, balances in excess of the normal $250,000 FDIC coverage are fully collateralized by the banks. So they're very safe. Of course, for the last many years, there was no interest earnings on those. Of course, now, you know, interest rates are going up, so you will start earning some money, you know, on this cash. You have liabilities in the middle of the page, offsetting those assets of about $12.6 million. Some normal year-end accounts payable, bills that, you know, had to get paid, and most of them would have been paid over the summer. And then, of course, the other big number is the amount owed the retirement system, $6.8 million, mostly the teachers' retirement system. They bill you, once you report all the salaries for the fiscal year, they bill all the school districts and the state in the fall, so you're in the middle of paying that obligation right now. So the difference between those assets and liabilities is the $34 million of fund balance. And if you go to page 49, the fund balance is broken down into different pots, so you don't just have $34 million that you could just do whatever you want with. Most of that money is restricted, so $22.9 million, almost $23 million of the $34, the district has set aside in various restricted categories. Now, all of these restricted categories are established either under general municipal law or the education law of the state of New York, but none of these can appear here without Board of Education approval. So it's both. It's law and local action. So of the $23 million that is restricted, you've set aside about $9.7 for tax sursurary refund claims. Now, you'll notice that that is down significantly from a year ago. It was determined this year that there were some calculation errors in the worksheets that the tax sursurary attorneys had provided and had overestimated what potential liabilities were out there. So the good news is for the district is that you were able to lower your potential future liability from about $15 million to about $9.7 this year, once that was straightened out. You have money set aside for what they call employee benefit accrued liability. That's basically vacation and sick time that would be owed employees upon their departure from the district. You then, this year, increased from last year, but you now have about $6.3 million in an ERS reserve for the employees' retirement system. So, you know, most likely, if the stock market continues what it's doing right now, when the state values its pension plan, obviously, it's going to not be good news. And when they, when their investments go down, your contributions go up to make up for that. So this would be a pot, if they were to increase substantially retirement rates rather than having to levy taxes in the current year to fund that increase, this could be an area that you could draw down from. And you're actually using about 875 of this in the current budget, '22-'23. Same thing goes for the teachers' retirement system reserve. You've now established about $3.1 million. There are certain limits and calculations for this reserve, but you're not at those. But again, should the teachers' retirement system, which is obviously a bigger bill for all school districts than the employees' bill, you know, should those rates go up substantially rather than having to levy taxes to fund that in whatever year, you would be able to draw some from your fund balance. And then, a few smaller liabilities, like these are liability claims. These are more for like self-insured portions, if there's any damage for the district. And then, as I said earlier, you see a line now in the general fund for debt service of $1,007,000. If you look in the previous year, it was $456,000, but it was in a different column. It wasn't a part of the general fund. So now, that $1 million that came over from debt service can only be used to fund debt service, so it can help offset your future debt obligations. So that's $23 million of your $34 million fund balance. Then you have assigned fund balance. You have about $1,000,001 for purchases on order, which are encumbrances, purchase orders that weren't completed at the end of June 22. I would imagine most of these have been satisfied at this point in the new year. And then, you gave back in tax relief an additional $2.7 million as part of your '22-'23 budget, so you were able to, you know, help lower property tax increases in '22-'23 by using, you know, your savings account. So what that left you right now is about $7.4 million in what's known as unassigned or free and clear fund balance out of the $34 million. That number represents about 5.7% of your '23 budget. That is in excess of what New York State law allows. It only allows 4%. Again, the large majority of the reason why you're over is because of the sharp reduction in the tax sursurary reserve. And I believe, you know, the administration, the business office do have a plan during the '22-'23 year, you know, to get the district back in compliance, because generally, you've always been, you know, at the 4%, you know, legal limit from New York State. So overall, you know, it's a good financial picture for the district as of June 22. And so with that, I'd be glad to take any questions that you might have.
No questions? Thank you for your comprehensive overview, as always.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
And thanks to the Audit Committee for their hard work and to Tim and Joe for their hard work. Another excellent report. Thanks, Scott. Have a great night.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Take care. And before we move on to the policy, I'm sorry, before we move on to personnel, we're going to have a quick update on the policy from Mrs. Wolverton.
Thank you. And also for the Budget Committee.
Budget Committee, yeah.
So the Board Policy Subcommittee, which is made up of Kelly Mangan, Samantha Jaberga, and myself, and we work with Dr. Ladwick. We met recently to continue our review of policies in the 7,000 series related to students and the 5,000 series related to business operations. And we expect to have policies to share with the board at our next meeting before then moving on to hopefully having them for our first reading soon thereafter. The Budget Committee, which is made up of Dino Puccio, Samantha Jaberga, and myself, we recently met with Dr. Wool and Mr. Whipple to start discussing our plans for putting together our budget for the next school year. I think sometimes we joke and say it's always budget season, but it's really not a joke.
It's not a joke at all.
We're always, we're always working on it. So that meeting was really just to look at some things that we're going to be watching and to help start planning for some decisions we will have to make. And so, I thank both committees and all three administrators for their time.
Yes. Thank you all for your extra committed time, as always. Moving on to the Personnel Report, I will take the Personnel Report on Consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, Certificated Personnel. One, Regular Appointment, SED Clearance Received. Two, Temporary Appointment, SED Clearance Received. Three, Extra Compensation Appointment. Four, Change of Status. Five, Rescind Appointment. B, Non-Certificated Personnel. One, Regular Appointment, SED Clearance Submitted. Two, Unpaid Leave of Absence. C, Other. One, Student/Teacher/Observer, SED Clearance Received. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? I would like to congratulate Christopher Gunderson, who is joining us this evening.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Very nice to meet all of you. I'm not too used to this whole public speaking thing, so I apologize if I seem a little awkward, but I appreciate the opportunity, and it's really, it's really an honor to be a part of the community and to basically help out the school district.
We're happy to have you, Chris.
Yeah, congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Thank you for coming, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for joining us, and congratulations.
Of course.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on Consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, Approval of Harrison High School 10th-12th Graders Field Trip to Calicoon, New York for a Theater Conference. B, Approval of Harrison High School 9th-12th Graders Field Trip to Boston, Massachusetts for the Harvard-Boston Model Congress. C, Acceptance of Gift from the Samuel J. Preston PTA. D, Acceptance of Donation from the Harrison High School PTA. E, Acceptance of Harrison Educational Foundation Grant. F, Acceptance of Harrison Educational Foundation Grant. G, Approval of Extracurricular Club. H, Approval of CSE/CPSE Minutes. I, Approval of CSE/CPSE Recommendations. I would like to thank the Samuel J. Preston PTA, the Harrison High School PTA, and the Harrison Education Foundation for all of their very generous donations. So thank you on behalf of the entire Board of Education.
That's great.
Do I have a motion to approve the Administrative Report?
Motion.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the Finance and Facilities Report, I will take on Consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, District of Location Contract for Educational Services, Greenberg Central School District. B, 2022-23 Appropriation Transfers. C, Acceptance of Internal Control Audit and Management Responses for Fiscal Year Ended June 30, 2022. D, Acceptance of Audited Financial Statements for Fiscal Year Ended June 30, 2022. E, Final 2021-22 AS-7 Contract for Board of Cooperative Educational Services, BOCES. F, Approval of Intermunicipal Agreement of Transportation Services. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next regularly scheduled business meeting is October 26, 2022. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great night.